The meeting come to order today is Tuesday, November 28th, 2017. This is a special study session of the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Olberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox. She is not here at this time.
Okay, thank you. We've already had about four hours of meetings this morning. It looks like we'll probably have about four hours this afternoon, so.
At least.
I don't want to delay on trying to move through this discussion that we have today. Thanks to everybody for coming in, and I'll go ahead and take a public comment on all three of these today, if anybody wishes to speak on them. We'll start with 3A.
So, item A and B are going to be presented together, so it's going to be a presentation of the 2017 Housing Demand Study by Cool Enterprises LLC, and then a presentation and discussion of the draft calendar year 2018 Water Management Policy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and Council-elect who may be in attendance today. Briefly, Mayor Olberg, Councilwoman Wilcox, and Councilman Lizell, as you're stepping away from the dais, I just wanted to say it's been an honor to work with you, and I've learned quite a bit while having those times to discuss certain topics, mostly water, but other topics as well. So, I wish you well, and I'm sure we'll see you around the corners and downtown. As the clerk had mentioned, discussion item A and B have been prepared into one PowerPoint. However, they're also, you know, definitely independent topics, so the conversation can go to either one of those. I'll briefly show the components of this, because there's quite a few pieces of paper we've given you on this topic, so we can move through this fairly smoothly. The first item that you have, of course, is your council memo, and on this, the item summary covers it very well. The draft calendar year 2018 Water Management Policy will update the 2017 policy currently in effect, and provides specific guidance for the allocation of alternative water to new development in 2018. Alternative water, as distinct from groundwater, is presently available in two primary categories, or how we categorize them through state law. There are renewable resources of the recharged and recovered surface water stored in Watson and Willow Lake reservoirs, and the treated effluent from the reclaimed wastewater treatment plants. Within this document, it also speaks to the highlights of the policy itself, a housing study, policy additions or changes that have been made, and just an overall comparison of the 2017 and 2018 policies. So, all those are within the PowerPoint, just to move us quickly through this topic. The other item that you have, as part of your memo, of course, was the draft policy itself. This one here, attached as well, if we need to look into it, was the comparison document. The housing demand study itself. This was provided late last, well, mid-last week before we took the break for Thanksgiving, so you have a copy of that as well. Wasn't in the packet, but it was provided earlier. And then, I've provided at your desk the actual PowerPoint for today, in case there's things you want to note or have questions on as we move through this. So, let me get this moving. Okay, so the housing study and its comparison to water in contract was key for the development of the draft 2018 policy. It's another piece of information that can be integrated, just like we do the general plan, the water and wastewater models, conservation targets, all those things we bring into this policy, so that we are well-integrated across the different things that are handled by the city. That relate to water, of course. So, in December 2016, the council adopted the 2017 policy, and within that included a requirement to assess inventories and demands for apartments and other housing types within the city limits. That contract was approved by council, as noted, and we need to give thanks to community development, because they were the ones who helped us actually pull that together. I'm not a planner. In terms of a community planner, I do water, but they knew how to get the right people, speak to the right people to have this study done. So, Martina Keel, I almost said that wrong. Martina Keel is here today with Keel Enterprises LLC, and she was awarded the contract to complete this housing study that you have before you. Okay. I would like to introduce her just a little bit more. This is a person that the community development staff has worked with in the past. She has, you know, quite a bit of ability, when you've read through the housing study itself, to compile things in a nature that helps us understand what our housing looks like out there. It was done in a fairly quick time period. It was awarded in June of this year, and it's completed and before you today. So, I'm going to turn this over to Martina, so she can walk through that study with you, so you can see then how it relates to policy.
Thank you, Leslie. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be back to see you again. So, the housing demand forecast essentially has three variables, the most important of which is households, because it's households that occupy housing units. And the other two variables are tenure, whether those households own or rent, and the type of housing that they own or rent, be it single-family or multifamily. For this study, because we had a relatively quick turnaround and a relatively small budget, we said we're going to leave out manufactured housing, so this just focuses on single-family and multifamily. So, the process was to segment the households that reside in Prescott into seven categories. And those categories are young or emerging, singles and non-families, like roomers, unmarried couples, unrelated people living together, and people living alone, as well as young families. And those are families where the head of household is under the age of 34 or younger. Same thing with established singles and non-families and established families. Those are households headed by somebody between the age of 35 and 64. Well-established singles and non-families, so this is people who live alone or live in non-families and are age 65 or older. Empty nesters, we all know what that is, so that's all households over the age of 35, no children. And then, other families, which is essentially extended families, be it parents living with their children, adult children living with their parents. So, because of the recession, the household growth trend and how households formed was not typical. And fortunately, the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University developed a model and a methodology to estimate households. So, I was able to piggyback on that. It's a very reliable model. And what it did is it accounted for the fact that young people weren't forming households during the recession. You know, I don't know about you guys, I have adult children in my home, a lot of people do. Eventually, here, they'll start forming their own households, we hope. And then, we use the housing data from the U.S. Census Bureau, as well as that from the city of Prescott. So, the model tells us there's about a 2.4% growth rate that we can project, and this is moving from 2015 through 2020. And that's roughly the growth rate that was experienced pre-recession. But what we, the households that we really expect to grow are the well-established, those folks who are age 65 and older and living alone, or living in roommate types of situations, and empty nesters. Those are the two that we expect to grow the fastest. They're also the two largest household segments in Prescott. So, when we say, you know, hey, these are going to grow, well, they're going to grow even more. What we know is that our well-established singles and non-families have a tendency to move towards renting, and empty nesters, of course, prefer to own. So, those two household segments are going to have the biggest impact on housing demand over the next several years. While we expect emerging families, young families, to grow, they're a very small proportion of Prescott households, so we don't expect a lot of impact from the formation of those households, unless, of course, there's some kind of shift, economic shift, or housing market shift, that brings those households to the community. So, what we end up with is we segmented, single-family homeownership, multifamily homeownership, single-family rentals, multifamily rentals, and came up with a number, or numbers, that we can expect in terms of housing demand over the next three years. So, what we can expect 2018, 19, and 20 combined is roughly 1,316 new housing units, demand for that, including 479 multifamily and 837 single-family. In the model, I went from 2015, applied the projections to arrive at a 2017 number, so we had kind of an idea of where we are today. Looked at permits that have been issued, and essentially, there are plenty of units to meet the current demand, so we've got a nice level playing field going forward. Any questions? We'll turn it back to Leslie.
I have a question. So, we have basically 1,000 units, rental units, in the works. How does that factor in with your 479 unit demand?
The current demand was estimated at 275 units, so if you combine those two, it puts us roughly around, what, 750 or so? So, you do have plenty of units coming online to meet the current demand, as well as the projected demand.
Okay, do we, are we, are we, are we rich in excess units?
Well, I think there's some difference in the way things are counted as well, so we've got a, maybe Leslie wants to try and tackle that, how they're counted.
Yeah, this is just the first course of the meal, so if we continue on, I think we'll be able to address you.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I would say, from a pure demand perspective, you have adequate units, because you have to have, you know, room for vacancy and, you know, movement, normal movement in the market. So, I'd say it's pretty much spot-on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem.
Martina. Number one, thank you for being here. It's been a pleasure over the years working with you on this topic. We've maintained a pretty steady growth rate in the city of Prescott. Is that a fair statement?
There was a small decline and kind of a flat period there during the recession. You actually lost some households. So, there's, has been a kind of a recovery that started around 2013, 2014, as the economy recovered.
Well, some of the panic that you hear and read and everything about where, you know, we're in the city of Prescott, we're growing by leaps and bounds, and we're going to have 300,000, 400,000 people here in the next couple of years. That doesn't seem like it's reality to me. But it looks as though the construction industry and in the marketplace are meeting the demands of the city of Prescott. I'm not speaking for you up by county, I'm only talking about Prescott. So, is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. And I think there's also, you know, you are in a regional market here, so, you know, these numbers are Prescott. Things that happen in the unincorporated areas throughout the Quad City area could have an impact as well on demand.
While I appreciate that, as a governing body, though, we don't tell the county how to live, and we don't tell Prescott Valley how to live.
Correct.
Chino Valley.
Right.
So, but what we can do is talk about what we do here in the city of Prescott, but thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Thank you.
And as we move forward, you might have more that relate to the housing study, something that caught your eye along the way. As I mentioned, this is one of those components that helps us guide policy for water. And we catch up with our slides here. So, we needed to incorporate, what does this housing study tell us against other information that we have available? And this answers Councilman Sishka's question, and we'll start moving into that. So, this is your seventh slide in your packet, and because it might be difficult to read, I wanted to provide you a hard copy. So, recall that in 2016, Water Resource Management had noted that there was higher activity for water requests in the multifamily projects, and it was estimated that, in a short timeframe, we had probably about 1,000 apartments or multifamily kind of development on the books. And so, we looked at the, you know, we were aware of it. This table actually lays it out as clearly as possible. So, you can see in the table, to get your orientation, there's a single-family block, and it tells you which contracts that the city has, the contract number, of course, and the associated number of dwelling units. We also are matching up against the housing study, because times will change, but right now, we have a five-year planning horizon for our policy. This one, the housing study, looks at the 2018 through 2020 time periods. So, what this is showing is that, in particular, let's just take Grant Dell's Estates, because it's on top right now on the chart, that they don't have performance criteria that might have them be in a condition where they have to come back in, and we need to renegotiate the water. The second part of the table here is the multifamily, and lists out all the multifamily. So, this, we had a pretty good handle on in 2016, and that's why we made certain policy recommendations. Then, we wanted to further that, get a better handle on it, and that's why the housing study was done. So, now, we pulled the whole thing together here, looking at alternative water that's in contracts, and, you know, who they are, and what the units are, of course, and just laid it out as clearly as possible. If we step this forward one, this is where we combine the housing study, building permits, and what we have in contract into one table, and look at what this tells us.
Leslie.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question, if I can. You go back to the previous slide.
Back up.
Yeah. I think it's important to look at the single-family as well as multifamily, and understanding that these are the developments that are on the table. But the question becomes, throughout those next four or five years, the build-out of those different developments. How many are we actually building per year? We can see the lump number.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's important for us to understand that that number divided by the number of years actually gives us the projection of what those demands are. Do we have any idea what those might be?
Yeah, let's compare on the next slide, and let's compare that, because that's where we bring in the building permits. So, we wouldn't know, it would be anybody's guess, if we take any one of those developments and say, you know what, they're going to bring in 225 units in a final plat situation in 2020. We just don't know. They're probably working towards that, but we don't have certainty. What we do know, though, is that what our building permit issue trends look like. And so, these were part of things that the housing study looked at as well. So, if we look on this side of the table, there's single-family and multifamily. We looked at 2016, 330 building permits were issued, and multifamily, 163. In 2017, walking it a little bit further, we can see it compares fairly well here. Less building permits have been pulled in the multifamily at this time. So, then, we start aligning what we have from the housing study, the demand that was recognized for single-family, 225, 279, and 283 in 2020. That shows that it's fairly constant, is what's being forecasted right now. And then, we want to look at the table that I showed you earlier, the previous one, and say, well, in contract, we have, you know, 1,621 units in contract, and it carries over the same number, because as I showed you on the previous slide, they haven't hit a performance criteria yet that would alter what we know is available on the water contract side. And we look at the multifamily, we went through the building permits issued, then the demand is 149 here, it jumps to a little bit, to 160 and 170. Still, these aren't big steps that are being taken, because we just don't see, in this forecasted time period, that there's going to be a huge jump in housing, based on the housing study. Then, we look at what's in contracts. So, this is what the demand is for potentially 149 units in 2018. The city has on the books in contract, the water's in contract, ready to go if they need it, 1,566 units. And then, you start seeing the number drop here, because if we back up again now, we know in this style of building, we have, this water contract has a certificate of occupancy that they have to reach by 2019. So, if they don't do that, of course, the number's going to start dropping, the contract side is going to start dropping off a little bit. And then, you'll see that again in a few of these other ones. They have certain things they have to reach, a building permit. And the reason why we do this, as you recall, is that we had projects that were basically sitting on the water, kind of waiting for the market to get to the right spot where they were ready to start building. So, in order to keep the portfolio rotating as it needs to, if somebody is not ready yet, well, then their contract will terminate, it'll allow for somebody else, and when they're ready, we would hope that the city's in a condition that we would be able to issue out water to that project. There is only a certain amount of water in the portfolio, so we can't do more than the portfolio, but if we make sure we move that water, because that's just the nature of development, sometimes you think the project's all ready to go, and it just collapses for everybody. And, you know, that's okay. It's not a bad builder, it's just something changed in the conditions that they had.
So, with that slide right there, 2016, that's roughly 28 units a month, and 2017's roughly 23 units a month. What percentage is that? When we start talking about housing and water, are we talking about 2% growth factor? Are we talking about three? How do you put a number on that as far as where this community is going?
Let me ask Martina if she can help with that. She stated a growth rate.
So, I want to make sure I understand the question. So, you're asking, what's the projected growth rate that we're looking at in the demand?
So, based upon bringing it down per month, if you're talking about, you know, 22, 23 units opposed to 28 units in 2016, it would seem like that we're declining a little bit this year. What is that average growth rate for Prescott? I'm not talking about the region. I don't really care about the region. I'm talking about here.
Right. It's roughly 2.4%, so, yeah.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Could I ask you another question, to kind of follow up on what I asked before? In looking at 2018, it shows the demand for multifamily as 149 units. Is that, is that correct? But it shows, in contract, to be built, 1,566 units.
No. So, in contract just means that we have water set aside, ready to go if they're going to build. So, if we take that number, the 1,566, and just back up.
Sure.
That's in this block right here, the multifamily block. So, we've had different developments come in and say, we'd like to do a 200-unit apartment complex. And for them to get their assurances and be able to move forward, we have to look at our portfolio and say, yes, we have water available for those 200 units. And then, we place it into contract, and it's when they actually pull their building permits, that's when the activity really starts. And we continue on. Otherwise, it's just a safeguard, I think, is maybe a word we could use, that we have supplies available for that potential build if they decide to build. And generally, they do, so they start bringing in their first 60 units of their apartment complex, bring it into the counter here at City Hall, and say, here, I'd like to be issued my building permit for this project. And we, as water, continue to track and say, okay, well, they have their first 60 done. Let's see if they're going to make their next performance criteria for the next unit of that apartment complex.
So, how long do we hold that water, Leslie?
It's all based on contract. Each one's written generally the same, but as you can see, some have, let's see if I can point this up. Almost wants to work. This Bethel Development, they need a building permit by March 2018 to be issued. This one came in actually ahead of this one, but had to, well, I probably won't, it's too many nuances for each one of these projects. They need a building permit by December 2018 to retain their contract water, and it goes on down the line. U.S. Vets, they were recently here, they need to be at building permit status by 2018. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Leslie, sometimes when we get to talking about this stuff, I think that we give a false illusion, so to speak, not intentionally, but just by the descriptions that we use. Multifamily may not necessarily mean what a lot of people think it means. I would have a tendency to look at the demographic, and according to what I hear from Martina, the people that are filling those slots, those units, whatever we choose to call it, aren't really what one might call in the city of Prescott, families with a couple of kids and a dog, and, you know, the whole nine yards. Those units are being filled by senior citizens. That's what's filling our multifamilies. And whether it's buy or rent, that's what's moving into the Prescott area, and more so into the city of Prescott. And by federal fair housing standards, et cetera, we cannot exclude people from living here, that would choose to live here. And, you know, we can't pick and choose who lives in those houses or in those apartments. And, you know, that's just the way it works, and that's what the market bears in the city of Prescott. So, I just thought I'd throw that out and open that up for your comment, also, because between the two of you, you understand what's really happening here with regards to the demand and the water supply, and the fact that we've been identified as a community for several different types of places for people to want to live, and one of them happens to be for retirement. So, I'd just share that out there.
And I think we can help reflect what you're saying in this table that you have on the multifamily. So, you can see that Willow Creek Apartments, you know, that one is located over near Embry-Riddle. That one could have a mixture of families, or students, or things of that nature. If we just back up a moment to Embry-Riddle solely, they have recently built two new housing structures on campus to house students. So, multifamily could be all students, it could be a mixture of students and families, you know, these different groupings that Martina provided. Touchmark, this one, you'll see Touchmark in both locations, because Touchmark has some single-family builds as part of the plan, and then it also has Memory Care, you know, the grouping that you had discussed. Crown Point Apartments, that one could be families, it could be a mixture. Bethel had a certain characteristic, and we could just pretty much keep going down the line. So, you're right, multifamily could look, could meet a grouping of different groups of types of people. So, just getting back to the slide, I think the point here is that we're showing this is that the city is prepared, from the water contract standpoint and supply perspective, to meet the forecasted housing demands for the next three years, easily. You can see the numbers are so much higher in the in-contract column versus the demand column, and that should be seen as a good thing. You know, we're not behind trying to catch up. We are comfortably, the city has made it so they're comfortably set, so that if this development is needed, when it's needed, the water is available. If it turns out the conditions change, which we know life throws changes sometimes, then there's performance criteria in quite a few of these contracts, generally all of them, that will start saying, you know what, it looks like it just didn't pan out the way you were thinking. The water needs to come back into the portfolio to make a way for somebody who might have a different view, or we need a different need within this community. Okay. And this is why you have your own copy in front of you. I apologize, these are tiny numbers, but there wasn't any other way to provide the picture that is needed for this. So, the bigger picture is not just that there is alternative water available in contract, but the overall portfolio also has groundwater, as you know. And so, just going through a couple of these numbers here, so you understand the layout of this table. Here again, we have single-family and multifamily as a header. In this area here, this is the groundwater portion of the portfolio that we don't manage through policy. It is managed through state rules, existing subdivisions, things. It is managed through state rules, existing subdivisions, things of that nature. So if we bring the bigger picture together, there is a potential within the city's portfolio for over six thousand, six thousand seven hundred infill into existing platted subdivisions. So the counter here at City Hall, depending on what parcel is coming in, it could be one of these parcels, and the city would be able to provide water out to that project because we know it exists in the portfolio, it's recognized through state law. This block here is all the alternative water, and it gets a little more involved because the city has made reservations for certain things along the way, has a general pool that they work from on an annual basis. But here again, you can see what that block looks like. Trying to find the one that, okay, right here. So we've been looking at about fifteen hundred units. That's what you've seen in the previous table, as approved, in contract, when they're ready, they can go. So on the single-family side, that brings the city overall up to thirteen thousand, almost seven hundred, that once again, the city's ahead, not behind, on water supplies and making sure that we work on these things. And then multifamily has somewhat of the same characteristics as well. A couple things that I should probably point out with this one as well is, of course, there's been a lot of discussion about the Deepwell Ranch, potential build out there, and where the water's coming from, and how many units that might be. So we reference that in there as well. And, let's see, and then I think Granite Dells would be a good one to note as well. So Granite Dells is another one, well, let me just step back a little bit. Sometimes seeing these numbers, folks are like, "Wow, that's a lot of units." And we know over and over again for the past few months, it's intimidating. And so from a water perspective, I'll say again, it's important to recognize that the city's not behind, it's actually ahead, in making sure that if these things happen, there is water available. What's important to note that I was trying to get to is Granite Dells Estates and Deepwell Ranch are both projects for which Prop 400 applies. And Prop 400 is the one that speaks to permanent recharge. So the water that will go out potentially for these in this area here, and then some of the budgeted, I'm sorry, down here is where Granite Dells sits. Granite Dells also has some of the water in this area. Those are both developments that when that water is used, it is returned per city charter to permanent recharge. Okay. To move ahead. So I think unfortunately we'll have to read this whole slide because all points are important on this slide. So what we're seeing when we apply the housing study to the policy and everything else of the policy looks at, as I said, the general plan, drought planning that we do, conservation targets that we hit, water and wastewater modeling to make sure that we're in sync with the physical infrastructure. The housing study is now telling us that from the 2018 to 2020 time period, demand is estimated at eight hundred and thirty-seven units, while supply in the development pipeline with active contracts is twice as large, not including Deepwell Ranch. If we look at multifamily, same time period, the demand is estimated at four hundred and seventy-nine units, while three times as many units are in the pipeline, so to speak, with active contracts, not including Deepwell Ranch. So I'm conveying this probably in multiple ways and restating the same thing over and over again, but you can see through table, you can see with the contracts that we are fully aware of, we can see through a housing study that once again, the city's ahead, not running behind this water contracting and water supplies. For calendar year 2018, there is no need to allocate alternative water to new single-family or multifamily development projects since development involves multi-year planning, implementation, market, demand versus supply, should be analyzed annually with the next evaluation in late 2018 for calendar year 2019. So what this housing study has done for us is that we can apply it for 2018, which is just a one-year policy, and apply what decision is made as to how much would be allocated out. And then we look at it again and see how it held for 2018. Did it read well? Did something change on us? And then we might be able to apply similar or adjustments as needed in 2019 and then in 2020. And then, of course, it would be advisable, if there's a big shift or if we reach 2020, then to go out and look at the housing again and see what is happening in this community if we've had changes. And the last bullet point is for calendar 2018 is recommended that alternative water continue to be budgeted, but for smaller projects, including infill and lot splits, things of that nature. So we get to the policy itself. And here again, the reason why we have a copy in front of you, I apologize, we just have a lot of information. So the highlights of this policy, and it's important to go through these as well, just so we're all in step together. Sorry. So the twenty-seven policy now in force relied upon a five-year planning horizon. Accordingly, the 2018 policy is proposed to be similar with updates to the background and allocation sections made only when necessary. So the policy was built, as stated, for a five-year timeframe, and so generally, the text holds. What we work on is looking at conditions and adjusting any specific policies that we need to, because we recognize there are conditions that are occurring, and to look at how much the council would like to make available for the upcoming calendar year. And we work through, you know, why does that make sense? Is there something we should be thinking about? That's what we do with this policy. The revised unit allocation for new residential development adopted in 2017 will remain in force. So we'll get to this to the next slide, but as you recall, just this past May, we did the research to look at what households were really using in our area based on billing data, and then there was an adjustment made to how the city allocates. The substantial quantity of alternative water accrued from the difference between the prior conservative unit allocations and the much lower actual use by customers over fifteen years was estimated to be four hundred and ten acre-feet. This will continue to be retained in the portfolio and not used for new development. So any water that you're looking to make available for 2018, we're not going to this, the savings that occurred. We're going to, this gives us a safety cushion where we can look at it maybe down the road if we really need to. Otherwise, it just sits in place as a safety. Sorry, keep hitting the wrong button. The alternative water will only be allocated to projects that return fifty percent or more wastewater to a treatment plant. It must be connected to city sewer prior to delivery of water. Just to refresh again, we did this because the city is providing more water than it is having return. And the city's portfolio is built by state law to do that cycling. And so if we're sending out more than's coming back, that is not going to serve us, the city well in the long term. So that was recognized several years ago, and we keep applying this policy. And so it's difficult for some, but as we continue forward, I think we'll be able to resolve neighborhoods that aren't sewered yet, things of that nature. That once again will be an effort that includes Water Resource Management, Public Works, Legal Department, to make sure that we can craft things that get people to a position where they have sewer versus not. The alternative water will only be, yep, sorry, hit that one. Water service agreement shall contain performance criteria appropriate to the project, including a termination date. I think we've discussed that already enough, you probably tired of that one. The reservation for, of alternative water for new commercial development is created in the amount of a hundred acre-feet with an unallocated balance to be carried over year to year. So this is added, and we'll just stop here for a moment. Why this is important is you can see that we have water available for quite a few residentials. But on the flip side, are we watching the commercial subdivisions? We know if the population increases, there's going to be more load on existing commercial services. There may be new industry that needs to be here to have jobs for people, and it just kind of goes from there. So we've been watching this one as well for a while, have, when the city had an economic development department, and we still have members here today who know all the ins and outs of this, we speak to them, and we integrate that into our planning as well. Are we watching for those things that economic development needs to have? It's much easier to go to the table and negotiate a deal when you know that the city has water supplies for that commercial development. It's just kind of sitting back in the wings, waiting for an industry that is good for the community, that fits here. There's probably tons of good industries. I'm not trying to make a statement on industries, but there are some that probably would fit better here than other places.
Excuse me, Leslie, does that hundred acre-feet accumulate?
No, it'll be just a one hundred acre-foot block, and as it's used, it will decrease over time.
Okay.
Unless the council decides that it wants to infuse water in from a different portion of the portfolio, which could happen.
Leslie, then that is the balance, one hundred?
One hundred is what we're proposing for policy to make available for the 2018 time period.
Do we have any data on the actual usage by commercial development? I think that's what you were planning to do, acquire actual usage data.
Right. You're correct, absolutely. So as part of the existing policy, at the end of the year, we were going to look at what was formerly called the tenth of an acre-foot markup for support services and see what that told us. So we're going to let the end of the year, you know, the books close, so then we can pull the data and say, "Okay, so what do we know about that?" Because every piece of information you can tie in is important.
Is the same true for the residential unit allocations? We base the revision on looking back.
Actual billing records. Twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen is the timeframe we use. So yes, like everything, we need to test it and see, did it hold? Did the, you know, did the change in the unit allocation hold? Did our understandings of what our commercial needs are looking like, is it holding? So you're absolutely right. The last one, the reservation of physically available alternative water for vacant residential zone tracks will continue to be reduced by fifty acre-feet annually. With the reduction transferred to the general pool, the unreserved, that's a lot of extra words there. We had for each such reduction, the corresponding reservation of fifty acre-feet will be created in the Big Chino alternative water block of the portfolio. That was a whole lot of information in one bullet point, so let's just look at this visually real quick so you understand why we... Put this in. So what we're saying with that bullet point is that the city has a vacant residential zone within city limits, block of water. Fifty acre-feet has been moving with previous policies into the general pool. And because we're reducing waters here, we're transferring over some of that to this transferred vacant residential here if it's needed in the future. So we're, once again, it's just a safety, and it's also to have our accounting system remain solid. If it's not in policy and the people that come after me were like, "I can't figure out what were, what were they doing? Why was there this fifty acre-feet moving around?" Well, it'll be in policy. There'll be a historical document if this is adopted, just like the previous ones that I've looked at and said, "I know exactly why the city did that." So that's what we're talking about with this bullet point.
So Leslie, that last sentence in that bullet.
Yes, ma'am.
So where is that on the chart?
The one I...
Yeah, the chart you just had.
Okay, sorry, yeah. You know, I think about this forty hours a week, and so it's all clear to me. So the last line is here.
That is that, okay. All right. Because here it says Big Chino alternative water.
Yeah, so, yeah, what a grid structure, right?
That is.
But this is alternative water from the Big Chino Water Ranch. And this one is, you know, I think is, time moves forward, we spend a lot of time in this area.
Yeah.
But when it's time, you know, we'll start focusing more in on this block.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. So with the five-year horizon for this policy document, generally, as I said, mostly there's just, the text generally stays the same. We make alterations or adjustments as needed based on conditions that we have. So as you recall, we've pretty much walked through this already, is that it was at .35 acre-feet for single-family, .25. There was the adjustment made in May of this year, and this is the new unit allocation structure. There was definitely an interest by many on the diocese and otherwise that said, "Well, what if we have water-efficient homes? If we look through the future, and what would they potentially use?" And so we built that in, so once again, you know, there's, the city's prepared for that to happen. In accordance with the U.S., or excuse me, EPA, U.S. Water Sense requirements. We'll wait to see if that comes to fruition, but at least the city is ready for that. In 2017, the residential budget was seventy acre-feet, consisting of twenty that was moved over from the previous year, and a transfer of the fifty I just mentioned in the allocation diagram from vacant residential zone. This originally supported two hundred new single-family dwelling units or a mixture thereof. Here again, we can't predict exactly what's going to come in, but we know that residential generally has a certain look. And the last bullet point here is important. Depending upon water efficiency, the draft 2018 residential budget of the proposed eighty acre-feet would, sorry, thirty, thirty acre-feet would support at least eighty new single-family dwelling units plus sixty-six new multifamily units.
Excuse me, Leslie.
Sir.
Are we being conservative in these estimations of allocations?
The unit allocations?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So why, why is that so? So we look at single-family, let me just point it out, because I know these numbers, but I know people don't look at them as much as I do. Single-family other, the unit allocation, if, you know, they're already going to be water-efficient because international plumbing code is applied. They have to be putting in low-flow toilets, things of that nature. The city has put the unit allocation at .25 per dwelling unit. The data from our billing showing us what the community was doing was 0.17. So here again, we didn't just run it right up against, you know, nose to nose, we gave it some breathing room so that we would have the ability, if we needed to make adjustments, to this unit allocation. Is that...
And over what period did you look at billing records?
Twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen.
Okay.
And Leslie, we reduce that, the .25, what was it before then? Was it .35?
.35.
Okay.
Yes. So before we move on from here, thought I did anyways, this last bullet, what's important here is to step back in the PowerPoint presentation where we were looking at what the housing study showed and what our contract showed, is that we have quite a bit already in contract. So the proposal for 2018 is a lesser volume, but that shouldn't, it should be very clear that we have a new unit allocation as well. So it's, it may be a reduced volume, but it also will support at least eighty new single-family dwelling units and potentially sixty-six multifamily, if that's the combination that comes in. Moving ahead again, this is just in block form, so you can see what it looks like in the 2017 policy. This is a contractual obligation that we handled in a previous calendar year, about two, two years ago. And then, as you can see, a residential was at seventy acre-feet, commercial block was made available at a hundred. It's been, we've been tracking this one and holding this one because once again, I provided the information that we want to be able to have commercial supplies to meet a future demand because we have more residential here. Stepping head to 2018, you'll see this is what the block will look like in the policy. It'll have a residential component here at the top, and then it also has a commercial, industrial, institutional with guiding policies for that volume of water as well. If we look right here at the single-family projects, we're proposing units, three units or less and a certain quantity, and then multifamily units coming in of four units or less and a certain quantity. There's footnotes here, and these weren't as prominent as we thought they needed to be in the policy itself. So when we get to the upcoming slides, I'll point it out again. But it's important to note that in calendar year 2018, alternative water budget quantifies, quantities, sorry, above, I need my glasses, I think, are available for projects other than those entitled to water by an existing contract or reservation. So I'll stop here for just a moment, and then we'll really dig into it in the future slide. It's important to know that, once again, the city's portfolio has so many boxes within it. And so we know that even though we're seeing, saying, "Okay, three units or less and twenty acre-feet for 2018," potentially as an option for the council to consider, is that we're still going to have building permits rolling in from groundwater subdivisions. We're going to have building permits rolling in from anybody who has an existing contract. We're going to have inquiries coming in for the vacant residential block. We're going to have, which we don't really talk about very much, but it's in there as well. We're going to have inquiries coming in from Chino Valley Irrigation District because we have requirements to serve them. So it's important to recognize that we're not at a standstill. We're made, the proposal is to address, recognize what we have on the books, still have supplies available for certain needs, and realize that we are, not me, the city is going to have at the community development counter, building permits still rolling in with the policy as we're proposing. The second piece to this is important as well. On a case-by-case basis, the council may consider multifamily projects of more than four units to meet a need identified by the City of Prescott 2017 Housing Demand Study and approve an allocation of alternative water, if available in the portfolio, for each such project upon a finding of particular community benefit. So we add this in because sometimes we have projects that just don't fit the mold that we put out there. There's, you can't make a policy for every single condition. And so this, you know, probably our best example that you'll recall that was recent was US Vets. That was a perfect example of where we're saying, you know, we really don't need more housing apartment units, but they brought in their particular community benefit and said, we can show you. We have a high number of veterans in the area, we don't have enough housing for them. And then the city can make decisions about that is, we need to have water available for that. So as I said, these weren't as prominent in the policy, they were just in the table. So in the next slide is where we try to make this very clear. This slide for the gentleman on the Water Issues Committee is reflective of our conversation earlier this month. So the committee worked through this policy on the 7th, and there were two policies that we spent more time on, and there was a request for us to spend a little more time crafting language. Legal Department, myself, you know, those of us in Water Resource Management thinking about this. So right now you have in policy as written, so I should give you the heading, lot splits. This one is always a challenging one because we have unique, plenty of unique situations across the city because of timeframes in which the property split or because of state laws that came into effect or policies that the city's adopted. So we do have to look at these, you know, carefully, case by case. The draft 2018 policy as written says, "Alternative water will not be allocated to support lot splits outside of city limits or within areas for which water is provided according to a pre-existing historical agreement unless specifically provided otherwise by such agreement." Okay, so what does that mean? So it's saying that, let me check my notes because it does get involved. Splits are, this one is saying splits are allowed in groundwater subdivisions if it is split-able in accord, I don't know if that's a word, if it can be split in accordance with land development code. And so this opens up the ability for any, a lot split of any kind, even within a groundwater subdivision. And so we had, as I said, discussion, the gentleman had discussion about this. They were concerned and said, we have, our current policy says we don't do this because the groundwater subdivisions are relying on groundwater, the groundwater portion of the portfolio. And so we had, as I said, discussion. So we came up with an alternative to consider, and this is just study, so of course it's not an action today, but just so you're aware. Alternative water will not be allocated to support lot splits occurring in subdivisions with a groundwater allowance or for pre-existing historical agreements for which the city has satisfied its contractual obligation. So to break this down again, is there would be no lot splits in groundwater subdivisions or in, we have these historical agreements, are things such as out in the Iron Springs area, Idlewild area. Those would probably be the two prominent ones that would come to mind. If that contract from 1967 said that there would be 26 connections, then we meet the obligation for 26 connections. If somebody comes in and says, but I have a bigger lot and I want to split it, then we would generally say, no, we wouldn't do that because we also have to follow a city code that says we don't provide water outside of city limits unless. So that's what the alternative looks like. Here again, I hope with these slides, if you do have questions, please feel free to contact me because this isn't always as straightforward as in a short block of time. So the second one that we looked at was water resource, or water service agreements for residential development. So currently, let me back up here. In the black is what is currently in your policy. We refined this a little bit more to bring in the information we already had in the table of how much would be potentially allocated in 2018 because we needed to make this clear. And so the gentleman within the Water Issues Committee, they have not seen the red text. We added that this morning because we thought, you know what, we need to hammer this, make it as clear as possible. So in calendar year 2018, applications for new water service agreements to serve residential development other than that qualifying for an allocation from a reservation or for which the city has an existing, an obligation to serve pursuant to a pre-existing historical agreement shall only be accepted for single-family projects of three units or less, or multifamily projects of four units or less, and while water remains available for allocation in the calendar year 2018 alternative water budget, reservations, and other agreements as applicable. So here again, we added clarifying language to the policy as written now. This has the effect of allowing development to proceed for which water is already in contract. It doesn't restrict small, single, private, you know, property owners. We still have, because we've had a lot of that lately, if somebody says, I just have this one little lot, and we don't want to slow somebody up, it's one little lot, it's not a giant subdivision. We want to help them proceed. And three, if we look back at Slide 15, it also works with the community benefit language that we've put in as well. So that's what we have written as of today. And then an alternative, sorry about that, let's jump again. The alternative language, because of discussions with the Water Issues Committee, was in calendar year 2018, applications for new water service agreements to serve residential development will be accepted for all types and sizes of projects meeting all other applicable city requirements while water remains available for allocation. So that one just opens it up and says, there's no, there's really nothing that is placed to help guide water allocation from the housing study perspective or other things we've learned. It just basically opens it up.
Leslie?
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you cut it off at four units or less? What makes that line special between four units and five units?
Well, we were originally at three for both, single-family and multifamily, and it was based on currently, policy says, those type of projects can be administratively approved, so they can be signed by the city manager and doesn't have to come before the council. They're small projects. But then we realized multifamily, we were starting to think of duplexes. And so they're even-numbered projects, not odd-numbered projects generally. So that's why we put that number in, to try to make sure we didn't get somebody in a funny corner because they were a duplex type of building.
What if, where would a six-unit proposal fall in?
Six-unit would need to come to council. Six units depending on if this, if this policy on this side as written is adopted, it potentially may not move forward. However, we recognize community benefits. So if there is something that really needs, and nothing, everything can go to council. If we have a certain case where like, gosh, the policy just doesn't work for this project, it actually doesn't make sense, something, it just doesn't fit. What can we do? Then it's something that could be brought to council, and we can look at it from a community benefit perspective.
So it's not absolutely prohibited, but there's flexibility if it comes to the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, can I just also, the reason that is written the way it's written is that if you, if you adopt a upfront prohibition, it's essentially a moratorium, which as you all know, is that statute really restricts a city's ability to adopt a moratorium. It's for a very short term, it has to be for a declared, you know, public emergency, like we have no water, we have no wastewater, or something else. So there has to be this sort of ability to be flexible and make case-by-case decisions on applications for something that's four or more.
And so we kind of close up with this slide. I think the points we'd want to bring forward is, once again, you could see from comparing the housing study to what was in contract, the city's in a good position. The city can, will be able to adopt a policy for 2018 with certain volumes in residential. There will still be that availability of water, and there'll be no stoppage of any activity at the community development counter. There are so many other portions of the portfolio that people will be coming in to use. So that takes us to the last slide, and this is where we are today, the 28th. We have taken this through committee, applied their understandings, and request for more information to the best of our ability to this document. It's in front of you today, so you can see the housing study as required by the current policy with the draft 2018 policy, how that works together. This can go back, if needed, if it's recommended, to go back to the committee for any additional work. And then in December, we're proposing to have it on council as a voting item. And then it would be, go into effect in January 1st, 2018. So the doors are ready, you know, for those coming in at the beginning of the calendar year. And that's all I have for today. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Questions, comments with the council? Any from the public?
I just wanted to point out one thing. I'm Daniel Mattson, I live over on Merritt Street. When you were doing the housing study, I just wanted to point out, I didn't see anything about making allowances for workforce, and I know price wasn't included in that study, and I'm a little concerned about that, so just putting it out.
We removed the word workforce.
Right.
Because there is no housing authority to enforce it.
Although, you know, there have been groups that have been trying to do that, but...
The city does not have one.
Yeah.
Thanks, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmen and Women, my name is Happy Oasis, and I was wondering...
Where do you live? Where do you live?
I live in the Granite Dells, just outside of the city limits. Where is the policy for climate change and mega drought that climate scientists are predicting? Anybody's been here this year in June, the record temperatures? Anyone here in November? We had record-breaking November and June heat waves. I'm wondering what is the shift in the policy regarding those situations?
Leslie, I think you've built in certain, what would you call it, cushions into the policy, haven't you?
We've done the best we can. I can't predict what the world's weather is going to do and where things are going to happen. What the city and the state of Arizona, as you are aware, has the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, and then management plans keep rolling out decadal-y from them. So the city, within the policy, you'll be able to see that the city has a drought management plan. Not only, you know, did the city have that in their code prior to, but starting in 2012, the state required that we file that, and so we file that every five years, and we take into account that we integrate what we know to the best of our ability. It's really difficult, I think, for people because they can't see groundwater, but you would notice our reservoirs this year were spilling. They spilled early, they spilled a lot, and the city's actually been able to meet its absolute water right for those water bodies at the recharge facility. So we're very careful. And then we'll have years, of course, where it is dry and we see, I only use the reservoirs because they're so easy for people to try to, you know, get a handle on things. They can't see what the groundwater is doing necessarily. But when we see that, you know, we're not having the rains come in, then we back off on how we operate the Watson and Willow reservoirs. So maintaining conservation pools, things of that nature, because the water bodies are intended for multiple things.
Thanks. No, we'll go ahead and take another person. I got, we got quite a bit to do here today.
Just one brief question, if, please?
Come on. I'll be out in a little bit here, we got a lot to cover today, thank you.
I'll be in the hall, sir.
Hello, my name is Linda Myron, and it's, I guess it's regarding the alternative water source. How long does it take to recharge wastewater, to recharge wastewater, to reach our wells?
So fortunately, the Arizona Department of Water Resources has been running groundwater flow models in this active management area as a whole. So they, we would need to look it up because I don't track exactly what, how our drop of water makes it out to our recharge facility. But through modeling, you can see what the travel time is, and it really depends on where the water's put in, how much surface water flows we have going, so I can't give you an exact number.
Can it take like five or 10 years, or does it take 50 years or 100 years?
Well, it's really, the city's very fortunate in that with the, where the recharge facility is at, the water drops in quickly, and we, so the operators, men and women who operate the facilities out in the recharge facility, they put the water in, and we go, it goes down. We have to report on all aspects, how much we sent to the facility, if the basin is wet or dry, what the infiltration rates look like. So I can provide that for an infiltration rate that we see at the recharge facility. And then we also have requirements in our permit that it can't, what they call daylight, so it can't be jumping out into the channel, and we get somehow credit for that. So we watch that as well, and all this is reported, and we'll have final numbers in March, March 31st. So all annual reporting requirements for recharge facility and things of the nature you're asking will be due to the state on the 31st of March, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Leslie, we're going to move on, we got about 50 minutes left for this last subject. Item 3C.
City alarm ordinance review and update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to the June study session where you had requested that Police Department come back before you with some discussion items for improvement to our false alarm reduction program. So just in terms of history, the program was designed to reduce police response and decrease associated costs for false alarms due to negligent installation, maintenance, or operation of alarm systems. This program is supported by an ordinance that you adopted in 2011, City Ordinance 5-6 for Alarm Systems. It was revised in 2013, and there were program modifications that were presented in 2016 but never adopted. Just for the purpose of all of our conversation today, I wanted to be clear that this ordinance expressly exempts fire alarms, panic and robbery alarms, and medical alarm systems, as well as proprietary alarm systems that don't have any kind of an oversight by an alarm company, don't emit any kind of audible alarm, or have any system that requests response by the police department. So initially, we did see some reduction in alarm calls, and so we could have said that the program was a success. But as you'll see in the next slide, we have not seen a significant or sustained reduction in police response to calls for false alarm activity. So back in 2012, 2013, the numbers were relatively low. There's an ASRIS next to 2014. That data is a little bit wonky because of a CAD system change, so I'm not completely reliant... is a little bit wonky because of a CAD system change, so I'm not completely reliant on that number. But as you can see, in 2015, and 2016, and year-to-date 2017, our calls for service are increasing. Now...
If I could interrupt you, I'm sorry. Calls for service, that's, an officer has responded to every one of these calls, and there was nothing going on.
So the way council has defined police response, once a call is received into the call center, into PRCC, either through 911 or a non-emergency number, that creates a call, and that would be a false alarm, whether the call is canceled. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later in the, in the presentation. This is all alarms, though. So those exempted alarms...
Right.
Which account for about 300 in 2016.
A, a motion sensor goes off, or somebody keys their keyboard wrong, all of those are included in that.
All of, yes. Whether we actually arrive on scene, whether it's canceled. But they also include those alarms that are not covered by this ordinance, fire, panic, robbery, those sorts of things. So what's important to note here is that the actual false alarms, so in 2016 and year-to-date in 2017, all of these responses, less the 300 that are exempted from the ordinance, there were only three actual crimes that were detected by an alarm system. Whether it was an intrusion, which actually is not the case, there were two that were windows that were broken, and one was a panic alarm that was set as, as an intrusion alarm, but it actually was a crime that occurred that they wanted to alert us to. So in 2016, so 99.8% of the calls we respond to related to alarms are not actual crimes that have occurred or any kind of an intrusion. So, in discussing and presenting alternatives for our discussion today, I identified three options. One, leave it as it is. Don't change anything in the ordinance. Don't change anything in our program. Just accept this current number as the cost of doing business. This is a service we provide to the community, and we're done. There are recommendations that I and my staff have identified to enhance our existing program, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on those. And then the third option is to go the way that Prescott Valley has recently gone, and that is to consider a verified response program. So taking them in order, ways that I believe and my staff and model policies nationally and locally, as recommended by the Arizona Alarm Association, a national organization that works with alarm companies, liaising with police departments, model policies that have proven to be effective in other jurisdictions. These are the, where I draw these recommendations from. Currently, we do not require alarm registration unless there is a false activation. So we don't actually know how many alarm systems exist in the city of Prescott. We have about 3,000 that are registered. However, we don't know if they're current, if they've changed alarm companies, if they've left the city. We don't know anything about that other than at some point, they had a false alarm that this ordinance required them to register. And we don't charge a fee for that registration. There is confusion about this. People don't know if they've come from another community, where most communities that have an alarm ordinance do have an expectation that that alarm is registered. Many, many require a fee. Some of the fees I saw were in excess of $100 a year. Not promoting that whatsoever. Be clear on that. But when we don't have any kind of registration on file, it does take additional staff time to identify the information so that we can send the letter to request the registration. And, and as I said, it does limit our ability to accurately account for how many alarms there are in the city of Prescott. So a recommended solution is that we require alarm user registration through the city with no fee. With our PMAM software, that was approved by, for purchase by City Council, online registration is now available. If it is a business, that information was incorporated in the business license application, so there's no redundancy. So if it's a business that is required to be licensed, we can draw that information, thank you IT, directly into our alarm program. I would request that it be updated annually. For simplicity, calendar year is a very good time, just so that we know that the information we have on file is current, is accurate, that there haven't been any changes, particularly with businesses, managers come and go. It's very important that we have that contact information available so that we can apply some of the other improvements we would like to make to, to the program. I would also, what I think has been missing in some of the previous efforts to false alarm reduction is working with the alarm companies, the, the providers, and asking them to partner with us in getting this information out to alarm users. And that would be an active effort on our part, again, through the Alarm Association. They have a product that they want to sell, that they want people to use and feel comfortable using. I think that they're a very logical ally that we could use in helping promote our, our program and responsible alarm usage, as well as correcting issues when they arise, and reducing false alarms, which is our goal. This is what the page on our website would look like. As you can see, registration is right there in the middle. It's a simple one-page document, asking for responsible persons, any hazards on site that officers would want to be aware of. If there is a civil fine assessed, there's a way to pay with your credit card on this website, and, and it's specific to the individual user. So you identify your, your email, your username, and your password. So it really does reduce a lot of the administrative responsibilities for our staff to administer the program. A second issue related to program improvement. We had set the response, the dispatch for alarm calls, that huge number, at the highest priority that we, the other calls that are in that priority are crimes in process, crimes in progress, a shooting, a stabbing, a collision involving injuries, things that are actually, we need to get their license iron quickly. A medium priority still assures dispatch within 10 minutes. But it, the, the advantage is that it allows cancellation. So if somebody comes in their business, comes to their home, knows that they put in the wrong code, and they're trying to get it all rectified, they can cancel us. And currently, 25% of our calls are canceled. What's disingenuous to me is that we still charge for those. And that is one of the things that I would like to correct in the ordinance, should you approve these changes, is that if an alarm user through their company or directly cancels the officer before we respond, we should not be charging them. Because it saves us time, we will not have to go, even though the call has been entered, and perhaps the officer is on his or her way. I still think that this would reduce the number of false alarms and not waste officers' time any further. So second improvement in this area would be to implement a fine with the first false alarm. And this, there are some things that I feel very, very strongly about, that we will have, I have a high confidence that it will improve our program and reduce our calls. Some of them are just suggestions. So assessing a fine with the first alarm is one of those things that I'm sure we'll have some discussion about. If we do this, at whatever number you decide, my recommendation would be that, that, that civil fine be waived if the alarm user takes an online class that's available through PMAM. They would pay for the class, a lot like traffic safety school. They would pay for the class themselves, but then this fine would be waived. Recommendation that each additional alarm activation, false alarm activation, would be $100 fine. It simplifies it. Right now, it escalates, 100, 200, 300, 400, indefinitely up to $1,000. Whether you adopt this or not, totally up to you. It's just for simplification purposes. The most important thing, aside from allowing cancellation on this page, to me, is that as a alarm user becomes a chronic abuser at a number somewhere, five, I've seen it as high as nine, that we suspend response until they correct the issue. So five responses. And in the data that we have for, for the years prior, there's about seven businesses in this year, 2016, being the last year, there were seven, they were all businesses, that would fall into this category. Looking back, many of those were also our chronic abusers in 2015. They're also showing up on our list in 2017, so they're not getting the message. This does not mean that we would not respond. It would mean that we would need some additional information, eyewitness, video, or, or some other information that something actually was going on before we would dispatch an officer. That wouldn't be a dispatch to an alarm. That would be a dispatch to an incident. So, and until, and, and as I, as I continue here, I don't really want to see people get into that chronic abuser range. I want to apply what we know about community policing and problem solving, working with them, especially these businesses that year-over-year, what is the issue? Is it an employee that is untrained? Is it something mechanically or technology-related with the alarm system? Correct the issue, so we're not wasting our time going there. If there's a real aspect of complacency, oh, it's that alarm again. You have to worry about officer's safety when it comes to that. And so I, I think that we can work with businesses, homeowners, and, and the alarm companies to, to really build a stronger response by the police department, working with them to solve the issue. There are alternatives that, that individual alarm users can apply, and I've heard this quite a bit, where during certain hours, they've instructed their alarm company not to call the police department, to call an individual or these two individuals, so that they're not, because they don't believe that would be, that's when the business is open, there should not be an intrusion alarm. They could expect that this is probably a false activation that they're able to correct, that they don't need police response for. So educating alarm users to that possibility as well. The final point on this page, we, in the 2013 revision, the government exemption was removed from the ordinance. We found out subsequent to that, Mr. Palladini might be able to speak more specifically, but it's illegal for us to send a bill to the federal government, apparently. So, so federal facilities are already...
There used to be the DES building out on West Gurley, and we sent a, a fine to them. Not only did we not, did we get a letter that said, "Go to hell," we got a letter that said, "This is a crime under the False Claims Act, and if you insist on paying it, we're going to prosecute you." So we sort of backed off on that one. We figured it's not worth the hundred bucks to, to mess with the DOJ on that one. But yeah, there is a False Claims Act that prevents you from making those types of claims against the federal government. There's no equivalent as against the state government, but there's sort of that, since we're a subdivision of the state, it doesn't seem, I don't even know if the state, state or county buildings even have any kind of alarm issues that would, that would...
They don't show up in our...
They don't show up with us, because they probably respond themselves. And obviously, the city one is just an internal moving money around, so it makes no sense.
So my recommendation would be that we restore the government exemption. And, and as Mr. Palladini mentioned, I've been working with my fellow directors and the city manager to build a program. Many of the directors didn't know that they had false alarm activations at, at a city facility until the fines started growing. We want to work with them earlier on so that they can correct the issue. And if they don't, I think Mr. Lamar has ways of, of encouraging that positive response and, and correcting the issue. So if any or all of those are adopted, the actions that would be required is that the ordinance would need to be revised. I would have that to you for the December 12th meeting. You'll recall that when we were working through all of the sober living home issues, and we identified a need for a staff person to assist in code enforcement about the same time that code enforcement was moved out of the police department, we gave up a half, a part-time position, which was responsible for the alarm program. Right now, it's ancillary duties for two other, two to three other employees in the police department. If we were to enhance our program in the ways that I've described, I would ask for that part-time alarm coordinator to be restored in, in, in the police department. And then finally, I would bring to you through the city manager, how we would actually define success. I don't think that the only way to look at this is a reduction in calls for service, even though that is indicative of, you know, fewer false alarm activations and a gain of, of officers' time and, and dispatch time and things like that. I think that if we accomplish our registration goal, then we would look at, out of that whole number, that 90% of our alarm users in the city of Prescott have zero false alarms during the course of 12 months, or some number like that, or, you know, some number have, you know, one, no more than one, or, or something along those lines. Even the best programs that are award-winning programs across the country, their, they get 40% reduction, which is about 700 calls for service. And I think that if we shifted a little bit and look at how do we help alarm users become, and there are a lot of them that are, that have never had a false alarm in the 10 years they've had their business or the alarm in their home. So I think that we can, we can look at it from that perspective and, and correct issues as they, as they arise quickly. And then review the program in one year, as I heard at the strategic planning meeting yesterday. So, the last item was verified response. This is a controversial program. It, it essentially requires something other than a single alarm activation. So two different locations of a building, activation could trigger a response, video surveillance, eyewitness view of something going on that actually suggests a crime has occurred. Only 30 police departments out of 18,000 in the country have implemented verified response. Dallas, Texas implemented it and then quickly deactivated it because of some issues that they had related to safety, safety of homeowners and business owners that were responding themselves and encountering intruders, burglars. So the city is surprised did implement their verified response program, I believe in 2014 or 2015. To my knowledge, they have not had any issues of that nature. And Prescott Valley is planning to implement their program in January of 2018. If this was an option that you wanted to consider, I think that we would want to take some time and assess community expectations. And then if, if it were to be adopted, we would want to give plenty of time for the alarm companies, because usually what they will do is try and reinforce their staff, and they would dispatch people to an alarm to determine if there was something, if there was an intrusion, anything like that. So you would need to give them time to, to build that up in terms of their staffing. And what this would result in is 19... And what this would result in is 1,900 calls for service, essentially, that we would no longer be handling. So it's not nothing. It does save officer dispatch and program administration time. So that is an option.
Thank you, Chief.
Kind of behind here, let me see. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, there are a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about. Number one, Olson's was broken into earlier this year. And a young man came out, and they did a great job, but the thieves were no longer... Nowhere to be found. Is that a, what you would call a verifiable situation?
So under the verified response? That would be an actual crime that occurred, yes. And that is one of the three in 2017 that I would count as an alarm activation that brought us to your location and rediscovered a crime that occurred.
Okay. Now, the second thing is, usually when we get a call from our... The company that monitors our alarm, they say, "Do you want us to call the police?" And my fear is that somebody's going to go, "Hmm, if there's a fine involved, no, I'll go check it out." And then you have the opportunity or the possibility that the owner is going down and checking it out, rather than a qualified law enforcement officer. So the owner has an opportunity to be hurt if he encounters the perpetrator.
And Councilman Shishka, that's exactly my concern about verified response, because that's how all of them would be handled. We wouldn't go unless somebody, either an alarm company employee, or a homeowner, or somebody associated with the business, arrived and actually found something. Now, one would hope, the same way that somebody who doesn't have an alarm at all comes to their business, comes to their home, finds a window broken, a door kicked, something awry, that they would not go in and further investigate, that they would stop and call us. And that would not be an alarm response, that would be a crime in progress response.
Steve, this is where you would kind of do the educational thing. Because I get calls from the college three, four times a week. I have dispatched one time this year, because I know it's during the day, that there is not a burglar. It's a student or an instructor that went in wrong, and that was during a holiday. And they responded to that, we had to search the building, because it was just odd. So it's educating your... If it's late at night, then yeah, you'd probably dispatch. But if it's during the day, you know, maybe not.
Well, what I don't want to do is get to a point in any policy where somebody goes, "If the police go, I'm going to be fined. And if it's not verifiable, and so I'm going to go and I'm going to check it out." And I think that that is, you know, an impediment to public safety. So, you know, if we can work that out so that that's not in play, or it's minimized in play, then that would be the optimum situation.
Understood.
Yeah, Protiel?
Thank you very much. Chief, you're concerned about crimes. I'm concerned about security, and they're two different issues, okay? There's no such thing as a false alarm. What there is is an unauthorized disarmament. Now, whether it be Cable One hitting a cable someplace and setting off an alarm or not, it's an alarm when you have a gun store, you have a bank, or you have a jewelry store or something of that nature. It's an alarm saying someplace that's supposed to be secure is no longer secure. That's an alarm. That's not a false alarm. Also, I'm still concerned, and we're going to sit down and discuss this someday, about what, when police respond, they're expected to do. Letting a citizen, once they've asked for a police response, go into a high-crime-rate-type establishment without solid verification the establishment is clean, is a bad policy. So we're going to need to sit down at some point moving in the future, you're going to have a new council, and we're going to sit down and we're going to discuss some of these definitions and what would be expected when you do have, whether it be a drugstore, a bank, a jewelry store, et cetera, what would be expected from a police response? For example, what Mr. Shishka's talking about, when the citizen, the private citizen taxpayers, has to respond alone in the dark with no police protection. We all pay for it.
Councilwoman Zell?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to pick this apart. Jim, I call it a false alarm, and we each have our own terms. But I guess... This is just a study session. I won't be able to hear to vote after today. I think a lot of these ideas are good. I like the recidivism or the person that has the constant alarms to be dropped if they're not improving their alarm system. A lot of times, people won't improve them, because it's a cost. They have faulty sensors, and the alarm company's going to charge them to replace the alarm. I think it's a... It's a cooperation between the alarm subscriber and their monitoring company. That's the first place. I have the same problem with people that use the fire department as their private doctor, okay? And they just dial 911 because they got a cough. You guys are not everybody's private security force. You are policing our community, and not because somebody has an alarm makes you their private security force. So there has to be give and take on both sides. And that's all I have to say about it.
Councilwoman Or.
Thank you, Chief Black. Very good. I'm pleased with some of the recommendations that you've come up with. Certainly, the required registration can be done online, partnering with the providers. The medium priority, I think that will help tremendously, because that does allow time for people to cancel. I know I've just saw an instance in my neighborhood I told you about yesterday, where there was a false alarm and how the police performed. I certainly feel that the verified, I don't think that's the way to go. I think that would really put us in a bad way for public safety. The other is, you have the part-time employee. When I see two officers on my street, one a block and a half down, another one, you know, a block and a half down, and it turns out to be a false alarm, and they did a wonderful job with the home, but, I mean, just for a part-time employee, we will pay for that many times over. So I wouldn't see an issue with that. So I like a lot of the changes, and I think it's certainly something to look at. You know, you, your department, you guys live and breathe this. So, you know, you're going to come up with the right solutions. And I would say, you know, I would be in favor of giving these a try.
Councilwoman Shishka? Yeah, Chief, just one more thing. Just like with the business license, people thought that they were signed up for the business license because they had a transaction privilege tax license, which is something totally different. If, in fact, you have a monitoring company, that doesn't mean that you're signed up in your database, does it?
It does not. And that's an important education piece that we would have to get very busy with. And I do think that there is a lot of value to putting this on a calendar year cycle, because January seems like a good time to just make sure all of these things. And we can use a lot of different methods, alarm providers, our own social media, and traditional media sources, reminding people, "It's time to just update it. It's not a fee, you don't have to pay anything. Just look at the information, make sure it's accurate." That way, we have good data to draw from and a good way to reach people with information that might help them avoid false alarm activation.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair?
Chief, I think my concern, more than anything, is how you, as the chief, would keep the officers from being complacent when they go to the same call over and over again. Oftentimes, I see them in the neighborhood, and I'll stop and ask them, "False alarm." And, you know, when they don't take it seriously, because they've been there three or four times, that has me concerned for the safety of the officers. So how would you address that with not only the... Maybe the owner, but with the alarm company to keep that from happening?
Well, one way I would address that is empowering the officer to help solve that issue. So particularly if it's the same time of day or the same day of week, and it's a repetitive response to this, if that's their beat, I want them to help solve that issue, whatever is going on with the business or the homeowner, so that they're not getting that next call or those five next calls. My goal here is not to have anyone on that chronic abuser list. If they will partner with us, and individual officers, I think, take a lot of ownership for the areas that they patrol. And I think that this is actually exactly what we talk about when we speak of community policing and problem solving.
I think it's a good way to handle it, with the officers being directly involved in it, because then when they do go, they have some sense of the fact that there may be really something wrong this time.
Right.
So I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
When you have false alarms, do you always send two officers?
Typically, we send two. That's the recommended response. Sometimes when there is a lot of other activity going on and we don't have the ability, and the call has been holding for some time, an officer will go himself or herself.
When I was stationed back in DC, I noticed on windy days, the people next door, probably the windows rattled and set off the alarm. It was daytime, and it was always one cop that showed up and walked around the house and then left. So I don't know whether you kind of use that kind of matrix or understanding of a situation to say, "Well, this is probably one, just due to wind or something like that."
We do have storm protocol. All kinds of things happen when we get a monsoon hit. And if you see a lot of alarm activations in a particular area, you can assume that it's because of the wind, or a power outage, or something along those lines.
Could you go back one slide?
This one?
I think that last one listed support from alarm providers for greater compliance. What were you talking about there? I didn't quite understand that one.
So the alarm companies, they... When they're installing a new alarm or upgrading an alarm system, particularly with a new alarm, we would ask them to inform that subscriber, that alarm holder, of what our ordinance is and what the responsibilities are of being an alarm holder in Prescott, including registration. Right now, that doesn't exist. They will be great partners, I'm convinced, based on what I've seen with the Alarm Association here in Arizona. We can rely on them to help us educate their consumers.
Okay. Are most of the alarm providers, do they reside in town?
I don't believe they do. I think there are a number of them might be in Prescott Valley, but I haven't done extensive research on this.
You're talking about the alarm companies themselves?
Alarm companies, yeah.
Most of them are in PV. We've got like... Centos is in PV, B&amp;W, I think all west might be in Prescott. But here's... Most of them use the same monitoring call center. They just direct that to that call center, and that's down in Phoenix. And then they call from there.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions from the council? Any from the public?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. I have a question, actually, and I don't know exactly who's going to answer this. But I live in a multifamily apartment building for seniors, okay? And we... When I first moved there, the alarm was going off constantly. That's dropped. There's only maybe been three this year. But even so, all three of those have been technically false alarms. They've been situations where the alarm was just too sensitive or something, I don't know. The last one was last night. Lady had a small grease fire that she got out before the alarm even got the fire department there.
So if you're speaking about fire alarms rather than intrusion alarms?
Well, yeah, it is fire and smoke and whatever, but is that a different system?
It is, and a different response, but Chief Light, I believe, can address that. I don't know if it needs... If he can work with you directly in the interest of time?
Okay. That'll be fine. Because I was just wondering if there's a way to kind of like... We don't have any way to shut it off, and we don't always have somebody on the premises that can shut it off.
I imagine...
But it's kind of silly to have people coming for nothing.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, is there general consensus to bring the program enhancement back up for your consideration at some future date?
Yes.
I would say yes as well, on December 12, so that we can start the year.
The one question I would have is the one, flat $100 civil fine assessed, first time?
You guys might want to... Are you comfortable with that, or do you want to talk about that a little bit more at the...
I'd like to talk about it a little more.
But we may, you know, without... Sort of slow roll this, we may want to have sort of a draft document brought forward with various options for the next council. And even though January 1 is sort of an ideal start date, anything we adopt generally takes 30 days to take effect anyway, so, you know, we may have to kind of ease into this a little bit. And because with the... With three new voting members, it's hard to know what... So we'll have to come back with maybe a draft ordinance that has sort of an option A, option B in different places, and get some sort of consensus, and then maybe bring it to a voting session after that, is my suggestion, Chief.
Sure.
That's a reasonable approach.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. We've got just about enough time to take a break and then come back and we're at 3:00 voting. Thanks.